Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2017. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Seisan?
Here.
And let the record show Commissioner Minier is absent.
The next item up is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any adjustments for the agenda? Very well done. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the consent calendar, we have no items tonight, so I'm going to move right along to oral communications. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission about items not on tonight's agenda. Do I have anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to written communications, of which we have none. Tonight, Item G, New Business. We are having a public hearing on 1093 San Bruno Avenue, which is in the SCRO-1 district, for use permit UP 713 Habitat Conservation Plan Compliance HCP 117. Do we have a staff report? Oh, thank you. Is this errata redlined at all, or? Okay, great, thank you. Oh, there it is.
All right, so good evening, Commissioners. The application before you tonight is for use permit and Habitat Conservation Plan Compliance review for 1093 San Bruno Avenue. The applicant proposes demolishing an existing single-family home on the site and constructing a new, single-family home and associated driveway and landscaping improvements. It requires a use permit per the SCRO-1 district regulations. It also requires HCP compliance determination as it's located within the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan area. This involves adoption of an operating program for the site. So just to orient you to this property, again, located on San Bruno Avenue, just off of Bay Shore Boulevard. It is surrounded by a mix of mixed-use, commercial, and residentially-developed properties, as well as some vacant lots as well to the north and west. Here's an excerpt from the topographic survey of the property, which is included in your packet. And this shows probably the most significant characteristic of this site that impacts its development is a 40-foot-wide SFPUC easement that basically takes up the entire front yard of this property. And you can see here on the survey, again, the existing structure on the property, which encroaches about a foot into the SFPUC easement. And just as a note, the site access for this property, there is no driveway connecting the lot to San Bruno Avenue. It actually takes access from the property next door. This is a historic condition that the applicant proposes to change by creating an actual driveway. You can also see on this site, the general topography. It's overall about a 29% slope down from San Bruno Avenue towards Bay Shore Boulevard to the east. There are two level pads on the area. One, again, mostly being taken up by the SFPUC easement, and then the other in the middle of the site where the existing structure is. And then there are areas of steepness in between those two pads. Some photos of the site as it stands today. You probably noticed the property owner did erect a security fence around this property just for security. No one is currently living in this home. It's also, the home itself has been secured to make sure that there are no attractive nuisances there. Here's a close-up of the structure on the site. So again, the corner of the home that you actually see here on the right-hand side, or right-hand picture, does encroach about a foot into the existing SFPUC easement. This home was occupied up until 2016, at which time it was sold. And again, since no one's living in it, and it is, you know, fairly older structure, it's been uninhabited since, and is not planned on being retained. So here's the applicant's proposed site plan. So as you can see, again, the driveway proposing an 18-foot curb cut onto San Bruno Avenue to provide actually direct access to this property via a downslope driveway, also providing two uncovered off-street parking spaces and a two-car attached garage. The driveway and parking pad would allow for turnaround, onsite turnaround, for all cars on the site, so that there would be no cars backing out onto San Bruno. They'd all be pulling out headfirst. And the home itself, as noted in the staff report, is obviously larger than the structure that's there now, but it's located roughly in the same location as the existing structure in that more level area of the site. The applicant's also proposing pedestrian access from San Bruno Avenue via an on-grade path, which becomes an elevated bridge and would connect to the upper level of the home. So another significant part of the project involves the removal of several trees on the site. This plan here, again, excerpted from the applicant's plans, indicates with a star the trees that are to be removed that are either collectively or individually considered protected. Although I should note, all of the trees to be removed are not protected by their species. They are all considered collectively a protected tree. Just as a note there, the existing protected tree on the site that is protected by its species, which is a California buckeye, is actually intended to be preserved. And so, the primary driver behind the majority of tree removal is, one, the SFPUC requires removal of any trees or significant woody vegetation within the bounds of their easement. That's something the city doesn't really have the authority to override as a utility, SFPUC has the right to make that request. The other three trees that I'll point you guys to in the lower left-hand corner of this plan, there are three fairly mature blackwood acacias, which are mildly invasive, and the county is actually, and the Arborist report, is requiring their removal due to their invasive qualities. And the other trees on the site that are being removed are small enough in size that they do not rise to the level of being considered protected under our tree ordinance. And the applicant's landscaping plan, conceptual landscaping plan here, proposes not only plantings of shrubbery and grasses, but also a one-to-one replacement of all of the trees to be removed, which is in excess of the minimum requirement, you know, if we're collectively considering them a protected tree. So they're providing one-to-one replacement. The County of San Mateo, as the operator of the Habitat Conservation Plan, reserves the right to have a final approval of the species, the tree species, as well as any shrubs, grasses, et cetera, that are in the final landscape plan. So you'll note that specific species are not identified at this time. Oh, and I should note, too, the SFPUC also has landscaping standards for any plantings within its easements. So the final landscape plan would be subject to review by both of those agencies before being approved by the city. And here are some architectural elevations of the proposed structure. So again, this is a two-story structure. What I've excerpted here are the rear elevation at the top, so what would be seen from Bay Shore Boulevard, and then the front elevation, which hopefully you can see the architect has included the slope of the property. So while you're seeing the building facade here, you should note that, you know, as seen from grade, if you were standing, for example, outside the front door, you'd be seeing one story, not two, just due to the way that the slope falls away. So part of the SCRO-1 district regulations, in any new principal structure in this district, including single-family homes, for which design review isn't required, we do, however, require a visual impact analysis. So in this case, the applicant has prepared some 3D renderings here, showing the relationship of this proposed structure to the existing site and to surrounding development. The visual impact analysis is provided in Attachment 5 in your staff report. It generally addresses the proposed structure's relationship to steep slopes, as well as any impacts to view corridors, both beyond, you know, from above the site out to the bay, as well as beyond the site up towards San Bruno Mountain. Also addresses the proposed structure materials, including roofing, exterior finishes, as well as exterior lighting. So in general, and again, I won't go too into detail in the analysis, in terms of the relationship to steep slopes, the project itself does not require a significant amount of grading. So the architect's plans identify a relatively balanced amount of 75 yards of cut, 80 yards of fill, the fill mostly being associated with the new driveway, and the cut associated with the lower level of the home to be able to fit it into the hillside. So it doesn't rise to the level of your review. This would be processed just with a grading permit. And again, due to the relatively minor amount of grading on the site, no new significantly tall retaining walls are proposed either. The walls around the driveway pad are about 1 to 3 and 1/2 feet. In terms of view corridors, the subject property is not located on a mapped ridge line, so will not impact off-site views of the mountain. In terms of views from San Bruno Avenue, so again, the natural topography of the site, as well as the architect's design, would step the house down from San Bruno Avenue, so the roof elevation itself would be located actually below the centerline of San Bruno, meaning that anyone walking or driving on San Bruno Ave really wouldn't have clear views of the house at all. So the primary views of the site would be from Bay Shore Boulevard. And again, the architect's design of stepping the house down, terracing it, minimizing the massing will greatly help to minimize that aesthetic impact. And also, the landscaping plan, again, they're retaining that beautiful California buckeye, which has a large canopy, provides a nice green screen. They'll also be incorporating the replacement trees into the side and rear yard to additionally provide some screening there. So moving into the permit review. So the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan requires that any parcel that doesn't have what we call an operating program, which is basically a set of rules and obligations that are assigned to a property and a property owner to ensure compliance with the plan's overall goal of preserving and protecting the two protected butterfly species. This property, while it's been developed for decades, the development on the site predates the adoption of the HCP. So there is no adopted operating program for this property, and the substantial level of new development on the site triggers this requirement to have an operating program prepared. So consistent with the HCP, we did get a biological resources assessment prepared by a certified biologist who's on our standing-on-call list for this type of work, who has been vetted by the plan operator, the County Parks Department. So the biological resources assessment, which is attached to your staff report, did not find any larval or nectarine plants for the protected butterfly species. In terms of informing, the operating program itself, which has also been drafted by the biologist's team, is based on those findings in the assessment. So there's no onsite restoration identified for this site. It is a historically disturbed site. Again, it's been developed for quite a while. So instead, what the operating program requires is payment of a fee to fund habitat acquisition somewhere else in the HCP area. That's noted as Condition of Approval D in the resolution before you tonight, and it's also obviously included in the draft operating program text. It also includes other standard obligations and requirements to, for the property owner to participate in the annual funding program, as well as controlling application of pesticides and other standard requirements that would apply to any property in the HCP. And I should note, the draft operating program, as required, was distributed to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the County Parks, who is the HCP plan operator, for their review and acceptance. Moving on to the use permit itself. So again, though this site has historically been developed, it predated adoption of the SCRO-1 regulations. SCRO-1 regulations require a use permit for any development, including residential. So as part of the findings for use permit review, first, it refers to adjacent uses and structures, considering the proposed project. So again, the southwest Bay Shore subarea is pretty mixed in character. You'll see single-family homes, multifamily, mixed-use, as well as commercial development in the areas immediately surrounding this property and in the district at large. This project would continue the established residential use of the property, which is, again, consistent with the designation of the southwest Bay Shore subarea. Additionally, the applicant's proposal would incorporate setbacks in excess of the minimum requirements, as well as landscaping and other measures to ensure a significant buffer between the development on the site and surrounding properties. And the next part of the findings addressed general plan consistency. So again, general plan designation of SCRO allows a variety of land uses, including residential. The use of the property in the applicant's site design and plans are consistent with the applicable general plan policies, including the subarea-specific policies in Chapter 12 to the general plan. And that's summarized in detail in an attachment to your staff report as well. And the last part of the finding refers to whether or not the use would be detrimental to the health, safety, and comfort and general welfare, and whether it would be injurious or detrimental to the property and improvements. So again, this project would accommodate all required onsite parking, providing onsite turnaround to ensure safety for ingress-negress from the site. Part of the standard conditions applicable to development in this district include an acoustical analysis to be performed that would involve the, that would inform the engineering and design of the structure itself, to ensure that the occupants are not subjected to unacceptable noise levels. Obviously, a building permit would be required, which would require compliance with all the California Building Code health and safety requirements, including requirements for sprinkling. And also, it should be noted that project construction, especially adjacent to and within the SFPUC easement, would be subject to all performance standards and criteria from the SFPUC to make sure there is no conflict or safety concerns associated with grading or other work adjacent to the easement, in the short and long term. So with that, I'll wrap up the presentation, and we are recommending approval of the project by adoption of their draft resolution. And I want to note as well, what I distributed earlier, we have a correction to Condition of Approval N in the resolution. This was a fairly minor edit suggested by the SFPUC to clarify their notification process in how they notify the property owner that work may proceed on the site. So with that, we're recommending approval of the project subject to the amended resolution per that errata sheet. And I'm available for questions.
Commissioner Mackin, do you have questions for staff?
Yes, I do, please. Starting with the agenda report, and it mentions an encroachment on the property at 3852 Bay Shore. And this would involve, I guess, the unpaved driveway. Is there a historical easement?
We've not gone through the full title report yet to confirm what additional easements may exist. I'll note that typically, in the topographic survey, the surveyor will consult any recorded easements, which would have to be shown in the survey itself. None are shown on this survey. I would imagine, this is speculation, of course, but I would imagine that it's simply a historic condition that just hasn't been yet rectified. And again, the applicant's intention is to provide, to abandon, whether or not that's a formally-recorded easement or just something that they've been using, it would no longer be utilized by people living on this property.
Okay, and again, on the agenda report, I'm on Page G 1.4. We talk about the, I'm down the third paragraph, conceptual landscaping plan provided calls for preservation of a mature, protected California buckeye. Is that the one, are we referencing the one near the driveway, or the one at the rear of the property? I assume this one was the driveway.
The buckeye is actually located on the eastern border of this property, so
Okay, yeah.
The driveway, yeah.
Okay.
The tree at the front property line, so adjacent to that pedestrian bridge on San Bruno, is a eucalyptus, I believe, and it kind of straddles the property line, actually. And they're not proposing removing that at all. So yeah, so the California buckeye is at the eastern border. And I'll note, as you probably saw in the Arborist report, the Arborist is recommending that potentially, once the project comes for design, that the foundation at that location of the home be modified to make sure that it would not be interfering with the tree protection zone for the roots of that California buckeye.
Right.
But that's a design recommendation, so she did not anticipate difficulty retaining that tree.
Okay, and then just a clarification, in the same paragraph, it references planting of a new tree in the rear yard, and there was a tree, I noticed on the Arborist report, tree number 13, a protected tree, and the Arborist recommending not removing that tree? What was the final outcome?
That's that same tree.
Okay, got you there.
So, right, so shown on the site plan, it's, again, the adjacent to the rear deck, and shown again in the landscaping plan as being retained.
Okay.
And the new tree would be to the northeast of the house. It's kind of a clouded-type image, if you can see, yeah.
Okay, another question. The, back to near the beginning, access on the unpaved driveway that partially encroaches within the San Bruno Avenue public right-of-way, were there any concerns from staff regarding that?
For the new curb cut?
Yes.
No, the city engineer has reviewed the proposed site plan and access, and has no issue with the driveway partially encroaching in the right-of-way.
In looking at the driveway and the way that it intersects San Bruno Avenue, and that being a, as it's mentioned in here, the road has an uneven width, it has curves, sightlines obstructed. The way that this driveway comes out, it looks very precarious if I was trying to make a turn to go north. Has that been considered in this at all? Because my secondary concern here, and nothing was mentioned of it, and I might just pass it on to my commissioners as a recommendation, that there is extensive work being proposed for this site, and I have a real hard time picturing massive trucks entering and departing from that driveway. And at the very least, I think it should be considered as a requirement that the property owner and developer be required to provide some very serious traffic control, because that's a heavily traveled with commuter buses, lots of people in and out, and that's going to be somewhat on a blind curve, and it could be quite dangerous. And there are also people that use that sidewalk as their only way into town, so is that going to be obstructed as well during the construction? It may be. It's a, I read that there would be improvements to the sidewalk, but again, my concern is just onsite. There should be provisions made to control this very carefully. And then I have a couple other questions, and I don't want to monopolize this, but it seems like on the rear of the property where it's mentioned that the city may suggest replacement trees that are not on the SFPUC easement, and it seems like on that rear of the house, there's plenty of room for that, and with the configuration of the home, I just wondered why some of those in the landscaping plan trees were not recommended for that area, since it was mentioned that it could be obscured from visibility on Bay Shore through vegetation. And I understand the need to not obstruct the views from the windows, but there certainly are suitable trees that are even natives, from bay laurel, horse chestnut, coffee berry, that don't grow very tall. They won't require massive pruning, that won't obstruct those windows if planted on the downslope, and it would replace some of this vegetation that's already there. So that's just a commentary on that. And a question on the plan noted as Attachment 3, which is a topographic survey, in the SFPUC easement, would it be possible to have an explanation what all these steel storage buildings are? There's at least three I noted in and around that easement.
Oh. Right, so on the survey, which is reflecting existing built conditions, I guess the simple explanation would be those are structures that have been located within the easement. I would guess they've been there for quite some time prior to this owner acquiring the property. We have, in our property file records, a significant history of this property, having a lot of accessory structures that were placed. So they exist there now. You can see in the applicant's site plan, they've removed, and the SFPUC would not allow any permanently affixed structures within their easement.
So I guess when I'm asking for clarification, are these buildings that are owned by SFPUC
No.
Or ongoing? They're not? Okay.
No.
Also, the geological report, and I'm looking at Grading Plan A 1.2, and it was referenced in the geological report, the concrete ditch for drainage, and it mentions in that report that the water should be conveyed, I don't remember the exact words, I could look it up if you would like, but I'm just wondering, were they given any direction where that water was supposed to go?
Could you provide a reference, just so I know which?
Okay, Pedro. If you look in the geotechnical report, Page G 1.116, letter H, Drainage and Erosion Control, Paragraph 2, Control of Surface Water Runoff Will Require Construction of a Concrete-Lined Surface Ditch to Intercept Rainwater Runoff During Periods of Heavy Precipitation. If you go to the following page, the first paragraph, it says, "The ditch should be sloped to drain toward catch basins, and the collected water should be transported through closed pipes to suitable discharge facilities." Do we, in fact, have storm drains going down to Bay Shore that are suitable for this?
So first of all, I will note that the, there is no drainage plan yet. So this isn't, again, it's not a grading application before you guys.
Okay.
So as noted on that page, under subsection H, basically the recommendation is that the exact location of the drainage facility they're describing should be determined by a representative from the consultant. They say at time of construction, I would argue, we require that prior to construction, showing in the building permit plans. So the location of that would be determined, required to be identified on the plan, subject to our typical plan review. I would assume that the engineer for this project, of course, would consult with our city engineer, use our typical standards and details, and find the appropriate location on the site, based on those.
I have two other questions, and I'm done. The location of the new dwelling, proposed dwelling, comes within nine feet of the PUC easement and the, what I would refer to as the decommissioned Crystal Springs Pipeline Number 1. I understand that the previous dwelling unit, which is still there- I understand that the previous dwelling unit, which is still there, was also in the same proximity. Are there any concerns with locating a house that close to that pipeline? For two reasons. Number one, I understand it's decommissioned. I understand from talking to our own Public Works and PUC that that pipe is not slated for removal. It's decommissioned, but it's just going to be allowed to stay there. I asked whether it would deteriorate. They said it was already deteriorating. Is there a concern with that collapsing? Is there a concern with it being that close in proximity destabilizing the hillside?
And again, I think the answer to that is, of course, it's a concern. It's something that the project engineer is going to have to take into consideration when designing the foundation of this home. The SFPUC did review this application even prior to the applicant submitting to the city. The applicant actually went to them first, to their land use, engineering, and landscaping design review committee. So the SFPUC did not raise specific concerns at that level. But again, that's really all up to the project engineer to make sure this property is designed safely, including that condition.
Okay, and I'll defer my last question to allow the other commissioners to speak. Thank you.
Commissioner Sefen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification on something. Now, in the Arborist report, page G 1.102, it lists different trees that are within the PUC easement than is identified in the attachment three map at G 1.10. So I wanted just some clarification on that. Like, for example, I noticed that the Arborist report lists trees 3, 4, 6, 8, 9, 10, and 22, as within the PUC easement, but the map shows its trees 11, 12, 17, 18, and 21.
So the map I'm looking at on, I guess it's, if we're looking at attachment eight, right? It's labeled as page G 1.98, using our staff report numbering. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the attachment three, at page G 1.10. It's the big fold-out map. Yeah.
Oh, okay, the site plan.
Yes.
Yeah, Plan Sheet A 1.1.
Okay, so there's only five trees that are identified as within the SFPUC easement here.
I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm counting seven.
Okay.
So the easement's 40 feet. It's delineated by these dashed lines. Yeah, not the dark lines, but the dashed lines. So I'm counting seven.
Okay. Okay, so are, so trees, clarify for me if trees eight, nine, and 10, are those within the?
Yes.
They are, okay, because they're starred, and they don't have the same identification as the other ones.
Yeah, those are located within the bounds. If you see the dashed lines, that, again, it's also indicated by, there's text that says approximate location of 20-foot wide pipe. There's two of those, and they have little arrows.
I see.
So overall, that's a 40-foot easement. So any tree within that 40 feet is within the easement.
Ah, okay.
So shown here, I guess I could have pointed to that.
Okay, that's all I had.
In your staff report, you'd mentioned some approvals for the landscaping plan required prior to the approval by the city. And I'm afraid I missed that. Could you repeat what you said?
So what they've submitted here for your review is a conceptual plan
Right.
that leaves the actual species to be determined. So essentially, the conditions of approval and the resolution would require, of course, a final landscape plan to be submitted with their building permit. That does require specific species to be identified. The applicant would need to ensure that the species they choose are acceptable to the Habitat Conservation Plan Operator, County Parks, as well as the SFPUC, who also have landscaping regulations applicable. So what that means is they're going to have to be collaborative when they're preparing the final landscape plan. And of course, the city wouldn't sign off on the plan until we have written confirmation from those two agencies that meets their standards.
Great, that makes sense. Could you also clarify what you meant by the minimum requirements for tree replacement and what collectively protected trees means?
Sure. So under Title 12, if the definition of protected tree is multi-tiered, as you guys know, some trees are protected solely because of their species and their trunk size. Whereas tree is not protected by its species, but is over 30 inches in trunk circumference and is one of many trees with over 30 inches of trunk circumference to be removed from a site, those trees collectively are a protected tree. So it's a little counterintuitive, but that's the language in the ordinance. Again, the applicant is basically considering, regardless of whether these are collectively one protected tree, they're replacing each tree, one to one.
So in the past, we've talked about like-for-like replacement, and I understand that is not strictly a requirement by city ordinance. If we were to want to change that to make it more of the de facto rather than asking about it every time, would that be within the purview of the planning department or open space and ecology, or how would we initiate?
You can, well, I mean, there's two kind of answers to that. One, as long as you're looking at a discretionary permit in front of you and a conceptual landscape plan that you're potentially approving, you can always specify what, if you're not identifying the specific species at least, you know, that you want it to be trees of similar size of maturity. That is certainly a condition you can impose on this particular project. When it comes to the ordinance itself, as you know, that would require a code amendment to change language in the ordinance. So it'd have to be authorized by the city council, and in fact, Chapter 12 is not a chapter the commission administers. So it really wouldn't formally go through the commission.
That would go through city council?
Yeah.
Okay. So there are several trees being removed to the south because they are invasive, and the HCP requires them to be taken out. And, you know, I didn't look in great detail at the preliminary plan since it's not final, but I thought it would be a good idea to consider and/or require that some of the trees be replaced there to provide screening in both directions, not just from bay shore. And in particular, it seemed like it would be useful to put in deciduous trees that would provide shade during the summer and, you know, more sunlight during the week and winter.
It's definitely a recommendation, a requirement that you can make.
And then finally, just for my information, the Habitat Conservation Plan, is that exactly in alignment with Brisbane Acres, or is it a subset of Brisbane Acres or a superset of Brisbane Acres, considering only buildable lots?
Right, so the Habitat Conservation Plan area encompasses the Brisbane Acres, which is an unrecorded subdivision.
Right.
It also stretches down to the highway lots, so SCR 01 district, and as well as, of course, the Northeast Ridge. So this isn't a Brisbane Acres site, it's not zoned RBA, it's zoned SCR 01, but it's still within the HCP area.
Okay, great. Commissioner Mackin, do you want to ask your last question?
Yes. In consideration for the property owner, the SFPUC easement and the SFPUC's assertion that trees and vegetation, woody vegetation be removed, why is the property owner being required to remove that at their expense when that vegetation's been there for decades? That seems a bit unfair.
I can't agree or disagree with you there. All I'll say is that, again, as easement holders and as a public utility, they have the right upon a development application, you know, nothing really had occurred on that site for many years. But now that development application's moving forward, that's kind of the threshold for them, as well as the city, obviously, to make sure it's compliant.
Well, because they're implying the ability to do maintenance on the pipes, and I'm just wondering how they've been doing that.
I can't answer that question for you, but...
And with regard to that, since the property owner is putting in a driveway, does this mean with that easement, and it crosses the easement, that the SFPUC will be able to use the property owner's new driveway for staging of vehicles or using it to access the pipelines for maintenance? Because that would be another sore spot if I was the property owner, that they were going to just use my driveway. And perhaps impede my egress
Right.
from the property.
So, you know, I'll say it really depends on the actual wording in the easement itself, which is recorded with the deed to the property. They, in general, they would not be allowed to completely block access to the site. That's not the kind of rights they have. And their rights only apply within that easement itself. So obviously, the portion of the driveway, that's not within that easement, they don't have a right to. So I'll just say there, my impression of SFPUC is, you know, even if they hold the easement rights, they have to work with the property owner, and if they have to visit the site. It's not a carte blanche to just show up and take over. They have to abide by the bounds of the easement and make sure that the site access is not completely blocked. Because again, they don't have the right to block any areas outside of that easement.
And if there's any destabilization of that hillside, which is above the property owner's domain, because of the removal of these trees, and from what I read, then there's a question as to whether trees can be planted in that easement. Who's responsibility for any of the hillside destabilization when PUC is requiring it? That's posing a threat to the property owner.
So let's go back to the...
For drainage and...
Sure. So I went back to the topographic survey, just so you can see the changes in slope on this site. So the easement area where most of the trees are being removed is relatively flat. Obviously, as you get a little bit more south, there's a couple trees that are on a slightly steeper portion. But in general, those are smaller fruit trees anyway and don't really have extensive root systems. So kind of a two-tiered answer then. I believe that in the northwestern portion of the easement, it's fairly flat, and I wouldn't be particularly worried about slope destabilization. And I think the trees they're removing in the other part of the easement are fairly small. But again, I mean, that's all something to take into consideration in terms of project construction, grading plan design, which SFPUC has preliminary, preliminarily signed off on for this level of review. Again, any of the final engineering plans, part of the building permit application, would also have to be reviewed by SFPUC, and they would provide the property owner with written confirmation that, yes, it meets all our requirements. The project engineer would have to take that into consideration, too.
When they require tree removal, does that include the stumps?
It would, and they actually have specific limitations on how the stumps can be removed. So that's, we didn't specifically address that in the conditions of approval, what the condition of approval N, which is the one amended in front of you guys in the errata sheet. It's kind of a catch-all condition that basically says, any construction activity, any grading activity, any tree removal activity, has to comply with SFPUC's performance standards, which again, would limit whether they're able to use stump grinders, you know, due to vibration. SFPUC has complete authority over that to make sure that there's no damage to the resources below.
All right, because I read they were talking about vibration and had to be more of a manual stump removal. But again, then, who is responsible for remedying what was taken out and making that ground okay so that it's not subject to erosion?
SFPUC, to my knowledge, you know, obviously, they control the equipment used within the easement, just for safety purposes. I don't think they would preclude importing a little bit of fill. And I think the applicant's grading plan, he can speak a little bit more to this. Obviously, most of the fill is in the area of the driveway, as well as that steeper part of the easement itself. So filling, if any soil loss is associated, it would have to be filled, and I don't think that would be prohibited by the SFPUC.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, along those same lines, I mean, I was concerned looking at this, for example, trees nine, the trees are all next to each other, trees nine, eight, and 10 have really large circumferences. I mean, nine is a 108-inch circumference tree, eight is a 51-inch, and 10 is a 43-inch. And then, you know, follow along, the next one's 96-inch. So all those huge trees are going to be removed in a line. And that's just a concern, what, I mean, what's the soil is going to be like once you do all that.
Absolutely a valid concern. So again, I think the project engineer is going to have to take that into consideration when they prepare the final grading and engineering plans for that site. Again, I would anticipate any soil loss that's experienced from removing a stump and/or tree roots would have to be replaced and identified in the grading plan.
And similarly, for areas that are graded that aren't under the house or the driveway would also have to be stabilized.
Right, which is limited. The footprint of the grading really, you know, again, not talking about the concerns we have here about tree removal, are limited to that footprint of the driveway, parking pad, and foundation of the house. So they're not really identifying any grading work outside of those boundaries.
No further questions from commissioners?
No, I have none. No.
All right, this is a public hearing, so at this point, we merely invite the public to come up. We do not need to formally open, I believe. So would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the commission?
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Bill Guan.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Hi, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Bill Guan. I'm the architect for this project. Julia's report is really broad, and he covered a lot of material. I hope he, she had answered your questions, and I think she did really well. I'd like to begin with, you know, Brisbane is a very beautiful city. You know, I drive by, and it is a beautiful environment and wonderful for people to live. And I always want to dream to have a house here, but it's a long story. So the existing house, the site has an existing house, but it's really in bad conditions. So we want to replace it with the same, just one single family house. But it's better, it's improving from what is right now. And we are, the house is not blocking any view of the neighbor and/or any lighting, natural lighting to the neighbor's house. So it's hit under, below the San Bruno Avenue. And there's also a water line, as you know, a water line from the San Francisco easement. So it doesn't fit for heavy use, like heavy equipments. I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful fit for single families, just like what is right now. So I think the develop is going to be good for the neighbor, it's also good for the city. I hope you consider that in our effort and give us a chance to improve this project. And I'm here to answer any or your question, if you had any. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything for the architect? Am I sure to say something?
No.
Neither do I. Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any other members of the audience who'd like to speak on the subject?
Hi, Barbara Evil. I had one question. The staff report said there are 15 trees being removed, but I could only locate 10 on the map, and I think 10 also said in the text that 10 were going to be replaced on the property. So I'm just, I'm sure Julia did her job, I'm just wondering what I overlooked, if the chair would permit me to ask staff that question?
Staff, do you have an answer to that question?
Through the chair. So 15 trees are to be removed from the site. Of those trees, 10 are collectively protected.
Okay.
So as you guys know, if it's not a protected tree, it can be removed without any replacement requirements.
Okay, so of the 10 protected trees, there will be 10 replaced. Okay. I, as a citizen of Brisbane, feel that part of what makes Brisbane beautiful is our tree cover and our open, you know, our natural habitat. I suppose, since it's the city ordinance, we can't, you know, have the other five trees replaced, but I still feel like it is a loss to this community in terms of the habitat those trees provide. And I would like to see the planning commission and city council think about changing that in the future. I'm also just looking at this landscape plan, and it looks like, I know this is only a preliminary, but the way they have the trees placed, it seems like they could only fit in very small trees, whereas the ones there, some of the ones they are taking out are quite large. So I would very much ask the planning commission to consider incorporating something into their recommendations or requirements that the trees that are replaced, in addition to being compatible with the HCP recommendations, are of the same overall size. And if they need to be replaced off-site, I think that I would personally be amenable to that. But that is at the council's or commission's pleasure. Thank you.
Do you have another member of the audience who wishes to speak?
Hello, Mr. Ryder, I live next door, right below the property, 1075. I'm probably the closest person concerned with this issue, because I've been the only one living there 20 years, and nobody else really has. There's only two other homes that have even had owners there, the rest have been rentals the whole time. I'm the closest one that's been an owner there for 20-something years. One of the reasons I bought the place is because of the trees and because of the area, kind of like privacy. And not that I can control that, I didn't buy the property. The alummens told me they sell it to me, but they changed their mind and went on and did their thing. So, you know, I do want to welcome them to the area, but I do have some concerns with it. I'm a 30-year urban forester and arborist myself, practicing. And of course, I have concerns with the trees, I have concerns with a few things. One of the things I want to start with is what Colleen mentioned, was the driveway in the street there. I've been on that street, like I said, for many, many years, it's a very dangerous street. You risk your life crossing that street every day. I mean, it's so dangerous. I brought that up with the last police chief, Hitchcock, here back in the day. And he decided he'd do a study, because I told him everybody's speeding up and down that street. He said, "I'll do a study, and we'll find out." And he put out the two rubber lines that cars go over, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them, and that determines the speed by how fast it hits the two lines. And then he wrote me a letter and said, "You're right, 85% of the people are speeding." So I said, "Well, we got to do something about this." And then he retired. So I sent some letters to the new police chief, and we're still having the same issue there. It's a very dangerous street, me pulling out of my driveway, you risk your life every day doing it. And the idea of their driveway there, too, I think is a problem, because I work almost two full-time jobs, I'm hardly ever there. And the time I've been there, I've seen three cars smash into the guardrail right at the property where we're talking about putting this driveway. And they're talking about removing, as far as I can see on the map, 18 feet of it, or 20 feet of the guardrail, to put a driveway in there. And I have a problem with that, because if you guys look at the guardrail right now, that section has just been replaced, because it was just hit a few years ago by a speeding car that would have ended up in my front living room, probably. So I know it would cost more money for the new owner, but the back of this property uphill has an existing driveway and a dirt driveway that goes down. And it would cost more to turn that into his driveway to get into his area, but it's an existing one, and there's no guardrail right there. So I think it's a safety issue, then, to put it where they're proposing it and taking away the guardrail to go in and out there. I think that's a definite safety concern. I mean, anywhere you try to get in and out of that street's a problem, but taking away the guardrail that's been hit three times, and I'm never home, that I know about in recent years, is a problem. One car flipped over it, and ended up in the lady who used to live there's property. So that's a serious problem with putting, doing that in that spot, I think. I think it should be done above where there is no guardrail right now at this point. You know, being a tree lover and an arborist and urban forester, I have a problem with removing all these large trees, too. They've been there over, some of them over 100 years on that easement. They haven't affected the pipe. You mentioned, how do they do maintenance? They haven't done any maintenance there in all the years I've been there, not a single bit. But down the peninsula, I have a lot of interaction with the PUC, let's say. Down the peninsula, they decided to start painting some of the pipes that were visible to the public. In the lower section of this property beyond me, lower toward Bay Shore, the pipes are visible. So they decided they were going to paint those, too, make it more colorful, they were going to do a colorful design. They started doing it down the peninsula. And they sent us a letter, said, "We're going to sandblast the pipes, and we're going to paint them." And me knowing about them, I said, "Well, what about the asbestos on it and the lead?" And they said, "There's no lead or asbestos on it." And I said, "Yeah, there is, I know about it." And they said, "No, there's not," and sent us a letter back, "We're going to go ahead and do it." I said, "Have you tested it?" They said they did. And when I looked in the pipe, there was no test, nowhere. They just said they did. After a few letters back and forth, they decided, okay, they sent us a letter saying, "You're right, it's got lead and asbestos on it." Okay, we'll cover the entire pipe. So they covered the entire structure and then sandblasted it. And then down the peninsula, started saying, when they were painting these pipes, these multicolors, they go, "This looks ridiculous." So they decided not to do that and just painted green. You want to call it maintenance? No. The cover that was on there, was on there, the original pipe that you're talking about that's not active right now, that came with my property with a handwritten easement, Dickton Inc., that's from the 1890s. That's how long that's been there. The reason they don't remove it is because it's there for emergency purposes, for two reasons. Earthquake or maintenance on the main line, the five-foot line, if they need to shut that down and maintain it, they can use the other one. So it's not just going to be inactive and never active. That's why it's there. So they're keeping it for that reason. So they've never done any maintenance where his property is and mine, the easement goes through mine. They've never even showed up, never done any maintenance, nothing. The only time they do anything is if there's a leak, they'll come and deal with it, and that's about it. So the driveway and the pipe. The trees, though, you know, is an issue, we all love the trees. And I know they need to build there, but in the PUC, I'd like to see where it says that they have to remove anything on the easement, because I'm wondering if that's really a fact or not, that, oh, you have to remove any trees on the easement. Because as we all know, those trees, the roots are holding the hillside, and it's several slopes and dips of the hillside. You take out all those roots, you guys made up those points, or you fill it in, that dirt's not stable. So unless you're going to build retaining wall after retaining wall, there could be issues there. Now, the previous owners, the alummens there, had another house on that property, and they wanted to build another house there, and the city said, "Okay," and they let them knock it down. And when they went to build, they said, "You can't build that house here." Not sure the exact details, but they would never let them build the other house there. There's still parts of the foundation there. And the city decided to widen the street. And I remember it was a nice tiny street, and people didn't drive so fast. Now they drive faster and faster, it's wider. But they didn't let them build the other house, the stuff is still there. There's nothing holding anything there. They widened the street, there was no land there, so they just built this little walkway of a wooden, like, something that, you know, kids would build to walk on, it's not even a real sidewalk. It's really nothing. So you take out these trees, there are two or three of them there, as she said, and the circumference is enormous. And the roots on those things, they go for hundreds of feet. So they're going to be affected, well, they're going to remove them allegedly, but I don't understand how you can remove protected trees. Why are they protected, protected if you can just remove them? What's the point of protecting them? We used to call them heritage trees, I don't hear that word anymore, but I don't know what happened to heritage trees, but I guess now they're protected, but it's kind of unclear what that really is. Protected heritage, what is it? But why can't they just be removed? I understand the ones, where are they going to put the structure, probably need to be removed. But the real big ones we're talking about are above this existing structure, above where they're going to build, on the level area, and I think those should stay. They're not affecting this development. So there's no reason for those to go, and they're healthy, too, and kind of rare, actually. And you mentioned the eucalyptus that's there, there's also an oak in there, a nice oak in there. I didn't look at this coastal live oak or something, but there's a nice oak in there, too. Now, I know there's talk about, I don't know, you guys call it the south side, the downhill side toward me, about removing the acacias and removing all this stuff. To me, you know, everybody hates acacia trees. For one, they're, they grow very healthy, they don't have any bugs, diseases, or problems. And it's one of the best firewoods we have in the Bay Area. But I know nobody likes them. Would I rather see buckeyes there, coastal live oaks, redwoods? Sure, but there aren't, there's only acacias. And those are the only trees screening me from the property. And I've heard multiple people talk about screening from Bay Shore. Nobody cares, people drive up and down Bay Shore, they don't even know I live there, they don't even see down there. What are you going to screen Bay Shore for? Screening from, I'm sorry, not Bay Shore, screening from San Bruno Avenue. Nobody looks down, sees anything, you're speeding up and down the street. You don't need to screen from Bay Shore. Talking about screening from, I'm sorry, San Bruno Avenue, twice I said Bay Shore. From San Bruno Avenue, they're talking about planting trees to screen and Bay Shore, but not high enough for blocking the view. No talk about screening me, the only neighbor living there, from this development. And, you know, it's not that I don't want them to develop, but I don't want, I want my privacy, I'd rather see some trees there being planted. The acacia's already there, it's going to take 20, 30, 40 years before any new trees planted that aren't even proposed from my side of the property to give any screening protection or anything. So I'd like to see those stay, they're not in the way, they're just there. But if we are going to replace trees, now I've been involved in many construction projects and projects like this with developers and everybody, and we generally replace trees with 15-gallon trees or rarely 24-inch boxes. People think you buy trees by the size of the tree, you don't. You buy trees by the size of the container. That's what tree sizes go by. And I think if they're going to replace them, let's use 48-inch boxes, you can buy those at all nurseries. There's plenty of space to bring them in with equipment and plant them. It's a 19,000-square-foot lot. It's almost a half acre, there's plenty of room for 40-inch box trees. That are only still about 10 feet when you buy them, they're not that big, but 15-gallon ones are six, seven feet. I'll be dead by time, before the time they even grow. And most of the construction projects I've worked on and done, the contractors end up having their own workers plant them. They don't know how to plant trees, and most of them are dead. I have a property up on Humboldt, they developed next door, they had to replace so many trees, they're all dead. They weren't planted right, they weren't watered, nobody cared. They only appeased the commission for removing of what they removed and plant what they planted. But they're dead, they didn't grow, so it didn't work, and that's what I see most of the time. Sound barrier, too, you know, they talk about sound barrier for the house, the existing trees there, blackwood acacia that everybody hates are a little bit of a sound barrier for me. And when they're talking about removing 15 trees, isn't that what they said? But I thought they only talked about replacing 10.
Because only 10, I think, required a permit, the rest didn't.
That's sad, too. San Francisco rules, every tree you remove, you got to replace with three. And I think Brisbane need to, since they're a wooded community and concerned about this stuff, maybe they ought to think about that rule. Three per one that's removed in San Francisco, that's the rules we deal with in that county. So like I say, I think it's a safety issue removing that guardrail for a driveway section. I know it costs them more money, but I think they should do it up above where there is no guardrail, and there's already existing dirt driveway that goes down to both properties, his and the one on Joy. Another thing that's not a big deal to me, but it's a little strange, is the address that's been picked for this. That property, when the alummens had it, was 3844 Bay Shore, I believe, this is all part of Bay Shore. Why have they picked 1093 San Bruno Avenue for that property? That was never an address for there. And it's not a big deal, but it's sequentially out of order for the street, as far as the numbers go. It's not in order, the, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The properties below are smaller numbers, and then bigger, so it doesn't make sense being...
So what are the property numbers below?
Well, above is like the thousand block. I'm below them, and my number's less than them, my neighbors next to me are bigger. It's sequentially out of order, makes no sense. Not that it matters, I don't care, but I'm just wondering how this is, how that was picked. Anybody know?
Yeah, I'm making notes on that. Would you rather take all of the questions in the middle?
It's at your discretion.
Okay, we'll go ahead and answer the question about the housing numbers, then.
Okay. So the answer being, the property prior to being in the configuration it currently is today was the complete lots going from San Bruno down to Bay Shore, hence the 3848 Bay Shore Boulevard address, which is how it was listed.
Right.
Our property files cannot speak to the reasons why, since they are created prior to me coming to the city, identify the property as 1093 San Bruno Avenue and 3848 Bay Shore Boulevard. So we're using 1093 San Bruno Avenue for this process. Generally, addresses can be changed, and it's an administrative process. The gentleman's point is noted, it is out of sequence, so...
If you ignore 1093 San Bruno Avenue, are the existing street numbers in sequence, in numerical sequence, going up the hill?
I believe the next block is 1100, or I'm sorry, in the 900 block.
Going up or down?
Going up.
What'd you say it was?
Isn't it in the 900 block?
Well, the thousand, so yeah, smaller going up.
Yeah.
And then bigger going down, but yet they're bigger than the ones next door, so just, it...
So you're saying that it's already out of sequence, ignoring 1093?
Correct.
Okay. Again, point well taken, address changes...
Is there a number that we could pick that would fix it, then?
It was just, I was just curious, I'd rather see the other points addressed, but I was just curious.
Okay.
You know, another thing, it's a very large house, it's twice as big as any house in the area. Very large house. Kind of out of size for the area, for the neighborhood. Kind of out of size for the, for the area, for the neighborhood. There's nothing even two thousand feet there, let alone almost four thousand feet. And again, it just seems like all the steps are being taken to mitigate things from above on San Bruno Avenue and below on Bay Shore, but nothing for the only neighbor that's there and been there all this time, which is me. We got renters next door, and this house was occupied by renters for all these years, the Alamon's never lived there. So, we have now a new owner across the street, they came into their parents' home, but they've only been there a couple of years. And a few years ago, the roofing guy sold the place to a guy who's in there and it's supposed to be a tile place that never opened and whatnot, so literally I'm the only one really there and concerned about it. And you guys also said something about encroachment on thirty-eight fifty-two Bay Shore. Now I didn't read anything about encroachment on thirty-eight fifty-two Bay Shore. What was that about?
Is that your last question?
No, a couple more. Okay, I'll just-
Okay, go ahead and just ask them, and then we'll go through all of your questions.
And then I think Colleen mentioned drainage, which has always been a problem on that street. Um, another thing I'm familiar with is water drainage, catch basins, culverts, all that sort of thing. And I've talked, talked to Public Works about it, taken video when it's pouring rain from Thomas all the way down. There's maybe six or seven catch basins, and for y'all that don't know what catch basin is, it's a thing that catches the water and is supposed to put into a main sewer. San Francisco has a separate sewer system for rainwater and sewage, most places have a combined sewer system. But anyway, the taper of the road, the non-culverts on the side that used to be there, but the dirt slid over on Bay Shore, there's no more trapping of the water and directing them to the catch basins. So from Thomas all the way down to the property, there's maybe seven, and only two of them work. And then we have the row of eucalyptus that go up from Joy, and the roots go out, there's a catch basin there, but because the roots go out, it pushes the water away. So it's literally pushed from one side of the street to the other. So there is only one catch basin just down from my house. And if I don't keep that clear all the time and I'm not there, the water backs up, goes down the driveway and floods my house. So drainage is an issue on this street. So, wanna make you guys aware of that, and we're talking about additional drainage and where it's gonna go and all that, so that's another issue. So the catch basins literally aren't catching the water. I've talked to Public Works and nothing's ever happened. So, that might be all my questions, but I might come up with another when you're answering them.
Okay.
If the chair will permit, I'd just like to ask him a question. To your knowledge, since you've lived there that long, within that property, the proposed home, that's a canyon, and oftentimes, there are natural springs that have been covered over with culverts and roads historically. Have there ever been any natural springs that you're aware of within that canyon going downhill? And can you give me an idea where they're located?
One is just above the proposed property.
Okay.
Across the street. And one is also at McLean, just down from it, up a little bit. And there is actually a catch basin at the one just above their property. And I, the city's idea of, because of me telling them that none of it works, and the water that comes down from that spring misses the catch basin. They put sandbags there, they're sitting there now, if you wanna look, when you drive up, you'll see yellow sandbags, they don't do any good, the water completely ditches that catch basin. So literally all this water comes down to one catch basin, which is not adequate for a hill this size and this shape, and so they paved the street and each time it just makes it worse, because you have to taper the water toward the sides or have little culverts or something to direct it to your catch basin. We don't have any of that. So in the serious rains, we end up flooded and it's a problem. Yeah, so there's two springs that come down there. And none of them are caught.
And the three trees, you mentioned the large trees, those are on that SFPUC easement, that's why those are being removed.
Yeah, but they were never removed before, they've never been an issue.
Right, I, I understand, I was just trying to give you that clarification, it was coming from the-
Do we have anything in writing from PUC saying that? I'd like to see it. Can, can I see it? Can you get it to me at some point?
Yeah, it's on the property file, so, public information.
Okay. So I think that's-
That's all of your questions?
I think so, I'm gonna just check, uh. Yeah, it seems like me and you guys are all concerned about the trees. Okay. Are you gonna answer the ones, or I can come back up if I have any comments on them, or?
Yeah, yes, that's right.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much. So, um, did staff do any sort of, um, driveway safety study about that intersection pursuant to the removal of the, the guardrail where the driveway is?
Sure, so, as with any application, it was routed to this engineer. Um, he, as we say all the time, it's his purview really, in terms of where new driveway openings are permitted, and he does take into consideration in that site distance concerns and that sort of thing. Um, so from that perspective, he has indicated that the present location is acceptable to him. However, if you wanted to recommend that, prior to building permits submitted, the applicant work with this engineer in light of the concerns brought up by the neighbors, um, that they work together to see if there's a better solution, potentially with less conflict.
If a car did miss the road and ended up going onto the driveway, was any consideration given to putting another guardrail on the downhill side of the driveway to prevent any such travel from exceeding the bounds of the property line?
I, I would direct the applicant potentially could walk you through, um, plans for fencing or any sort of thing like that. Um, I would be curious how the PUC would react to installation of that type of safety railing. Um, just anticipating it would have to be reinforced and probably require foundations of a certain, so I'll let the applicant, um, answer whether he wanted to incorporate any fencing, but I, I would put out there that the SOPUC might have opinions on that as well.
Could you speak to the microphone?
We're not having a discussion, so perhaps later he can- We, yeah, we are, but it's, by the time we're answering questions from staff, so maybe he can come back for clarifications in a minute. So, is, is the summary then, is that you're saying that it's solely the purview of the city engineer and not the planning commission, safety of streets and, and guardrails, or is that within our purview?
So, the driveway opening is within the public right of way. So, that is subject to the city engineer's purview. Again, I think you have every right to make recommendations and call out concerns. Um, but it is in the public right of way.
And in terms of putting guardrails up within the right of way, those are, again, under the purview of the city engineer as well, again, if you have recommendations or suggestions for him, that's, that's fine, but again, it's ultimately the city engineer's call as to where those kind of safety structures are built.
Similarly, many of the trees that are being removed are invasive under the HCP. Do we have any ability to request or require that they be preserved even though the HCP requires their removal?
I don't think, well, first of all, in addition to being in the HCP, the city also has an administrative policy that says any species listed on the California invasive plant, uh, inventory is basically not permitted in any landscaping plan. This species is listed as mildly invasive on that list, so just outright. If this was, you know, private property adjacent to the HCP, for example, we'd probably have the same recommendation. Because it is in the HCP, however, landscaping is a significant portion of how sites are actually complying with its provisions. Every site within the HCP, so for example, eight Thomas, which is probably the most recent operating program you guys saw, um, has a similar requirement that all invasive species be removed from the site. And that, that includes, it's not limited to, you know, grasses and vines and ivy, but would also include tree species, so I guess the short answer is I don't believe we have the authority to override the provisions of the habitat conservation plan in that aspect. It's something you could recommend, um, the applicant, you know, reach out to the plan operator about, um, see if there are solutions that the operator thinks could still comply with the overall intent of the HCP, but I'm not very confident that that could be reached. But you could recommend it be considered.
And, uh, similarly, do we have any authority over the land that's part of the SFPUC easement vis a vis their requirements, that all of those trees be removed on their easement?
You could recommend that staff work with SOPUC staff to come to a potential solution about preserving some of the more mature trees that they are requesting to be removed. Um, I think, you know, the gentleman's question was, you know, what, do they really have the right to require that, and again, I think that, well, it's more of a legal question. Um, they do have easement rights for maintenance, and I don't think it's a far stretch to believe that intrusion of roots, when you're talking about pipes, there's probably a nexus there for their concern. But you can, like I said, request that staff interact with SOPUC directly, see if there's any compromise that could be reached to try to preserve as many as we can.
Okay, um, next item I have is the house size. I've often talked about house size limits, in the case of this particular plan, I believe the proposed plan is conforming. Um, do we have any, uh, ability to limit the size beyond what's been proposed?
So, the provisions of the SCR01 district are what's controlling here. So, if you look at, um, I'll grab the staff report. Hold please. Sorry. If you look at attachment one to the staff report, this is a mixed-use district, so, we have a nineteen thousand, again, almost half an acre site. The proposed floor area ratio is twenty percent of the lot size. Even in our strictly residential districts, we have a seventy-two percent FAR maximum, so when you look at it as a ratio of the size of the lot itself, it's far below our typical residential FAR. Um, the FAR for this district is, is much higher than our typical residential district at, at two point oh FAR. So it complies with the requirements of the district, and again, as a percentage of the total lot size, it's, it's fairly, um, uh, smaller in ratio than a lot of the new development that we see compared to the size of the lot.
Oh yeah, so you're saying that we have no affordance to limit conformant properties?
Outside of the findings that you're required to make for the use permit, which pertain in general to compatibility with adjacent uses and structures, um, consistency with the general plan, which again establishes the FAR, which is at two point oh, I think you'd be hard pressed to not be able to make the findings, um, due to just the square footage of the house itself, absent any restrictions on the new home sizes. If it complies with the district standards.
Right, I mean, the existing houses are fairly small, but the fact that no one has happened to build a large house, it isn't really going to be a factor here, I believe, right? Okay, um. And what is the issue with the, uh, encroachment on three eight five two Bay Shore? Cause I don't remember that.
Sure, uh, I might pull up the slide again. Uh, show you the aerial. So, looking at the aerial map, basically, the driveway that is from San Bruno Avenue, you can kind of see in this aerial, if I can zoom in a little bit. Sure. Um, the dirt driveway that's accessed from San Bruno right now, it's basically partially within the San Bruno Avenue right of way and partially in the rear of thirty-eight fifty-two Bay Shore, so again, we don't have any record of a formal access easement there. I would imagine, again, this is just a historic, existing condition. Um, but that driveway, as it appears today, would not be allowed without property owner permission and recordation of a formal access easement to be formalized. So the applicant's proposal would create the new curb cut basically right past the existing driveway within the actual bounds of the property itself. Is that, is this aerial showing you enough?
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand. Oh, and returning to the issue of the guardrail, one of my notes got misplaced here. Uh, would it also be in the purview of city council, or would it be a direct police or city engineer manager, or engineer? If, um, you know, to do another speed study similar to the one that was done in the past?
I think that's a recommendation we can pass on at the staff level.
Yeah, again, that's typically, um, an administrative function through the city engineer and the police chief. I mean, obviously, the council has input on those kind of issues, but again, that, that's more of a, a technical function.
So before we call Mr. Rider back up, Commissioner Mackin, did you have any other questions for staff related to his comments?
Thank you. Um, so, did you say that you would be willing to, staff would be willing to talk with the SFPUC about all these large trees being removed and if they have to be, because, you know, I'm, I'm assuming it's this development that's triggering this requirement, so they were fine with it before.
Yes, if you guys wanted to modify the resolution to have a condition that staff talk with, um, staff at the SOPUC, attempt to preserve, if possible, any of the existing trees, you could, you could modify the resolution as such. We can't guarantee an outcome at this point, but we could at least start the conversation.
Oh, and I thought of another thing that I was going to ask that I didn't take notes on. In absence of the formal landscape plan, do we still have the affordance for stipulating locations for replacement trees?
Absolutely, the fact that it's conceptual lends itself even more to your specific recommendations to be reflected in the final plan. You do have the purview to make those types of recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Rider, if we missed any of your questions, or if you have any follow-up questions, uh, you may return.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could do a recommendation of some of the new plantings between my property and the proposed property here would be real nice. Seeing how none of it seems to be proposing that. Since I'm the only one that's gonna be directly affected, like I said, people driving up and down San Bruno Avenue aren't gonna be affected. People on Bay Shore don't even notice it. And the, uh, Roto-Rooter guys are just renters down below, they don't care. And the Roto-Rooter guys are just renters down below, they don't care. I think I'm the only one that cares, so that'd be nice. And what you asked before, and there's no foundations, I just saw them replace the guardrail is there. They just dug, put her so down, put in some beams, and just put the guardrail back on. So as far as that affecting the pipes, I wouldn't think so. All this grading, digging, removing trees and everything's not going to affect them. I don't think that would either. So I appreciate you guys listening to my issues and thoughts. Still want to welcome you guys to the neighborhood. No, nothing personal, nothing like that. Just trying to, you know, trying to make it good for everybody, so. That's what I got.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the commission on this subject? All right, I guess we'll move on to discussion then. Want to take trees first?
I want to suggest entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
Right, could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to kick us off on landscaping, trees?
Sure.
And grading?
In thinking about what's been conveyed to staff about speaking to the SFPUC, about all of that vegetation and tree removal, it occurs to me that part of that conversation should be the anecdotal evidence provided by the neighbor about drainage problems, culverts, potential erosion, springs in the area. So that this could in fact be the discussion leverage with the PUC saying you could create a significant problem for the property owner and the neighbors because we already have existing problems have been brought to our attention subsequent to your directive to remove trees. And that, are you willing to take responsibility for subsequent damage if you mandate that they be removed? And/or that you may create undue pressure on existing culverts and drainage problems, which may have to be remedied. With that in mind, when we have the discussion of trees, there's a lot of trees on that easement that are slated for removal. If they're not removed, it's going to change the way the hillside looks. It will stay the way it looks now, as opposed to being denuded of trees and seeing the pipes. I appreciate what you're saying about the cars on Bay Shore, they don't care. I still would like to see a little more screening of the front, simply because it is already and that's going to be bared, even if it's just limited trees. I also agree with what you're saying about maintaining trees on the adjacent property line. From the landscape, and perhaps Julie, if you could bring it up, the landscape plan, it shows trees being added near your property line. If we look at the lower-left corner where there's trees 16, 19, and 20 above it, it indicates new trees being planted. And at the same time, I can empathize with, when you plant a new tree and it's 10, 20 feet tall, you're going to wait a lifetime, you're never going to see those trees go to maturity. I mean, it's just, people move, it changes everything. So you made a recommendation for, and I appreciate that, bringing it to our attention. It's not the height of a replacement tree, but it's also the box itself. And I think that's something that should be considered with the landscape plan for any replacement trees, that because we're removing, even without the easement area, we're removing some large, what would be protected trees in the foundation, the footprint of the new residents, that we consider putting some more mature, larger box replacement trees. And specifically on the downward slope of San Bruno Avenue, near that property line.
I agree, yeah. No, I agree with all of that, yeah. I mean, the suggestion was, you know, currently, it's slated to put 24 box, 24-inch boxes there. So you say it could be doubled, why not recommend that? I mean, if it's possible to do.
I would also, if I might add, just for the comfort of any of the neighbors, the arborist report submitted with this project shows at least some indication to me of a commitment to have an arborist work on-site because that's emphasized over and over and over. So if you're concerned a contractor's going to plant trees and disappear, that's not what I'm reading in the arborist report at all. The arborist is over and over restating that they must be on-site to protect the existing trees from damage and also the planting of new trees.
Yeah, discussion is for the commission right now, it's not a public hearing anymore.
They can't hear you at home.
Well, perhaps we'll reopen public testimony after discussion. There's a question for staff, is the arborist already required for the existing landscaping plan?
So what the arborist report requires, as the gentleman was referring to, is confirmation that any tree protection fencing is installed prior to start of grading or demo. The installation of landscaping, however, is at the direction of the contractor and landscape designer. Right. So in terms of conditions you could impose, you probably could impose a condition that prior to final inspection, the project landscape designer submit written confirmation that not only is the landscape installed, but that it was installed subject to the requirements or standards to ensure they'll thrive. I don't think that's unreasonable. And of course, staff always visits the site to make sure it's been planted, but, you know, we can't see under the compost. So yeah, written confirmation from the landscape designer, I think, is a reasonable request to make.
And I forgot to ask earlier, since replacement is largely site-dependent anyway, is there anything preventing us from requiring a higher replacement level, say 1.5 to 1 instead of 1 to 1 on the protected trees?
No, I don't think that the tree ordinance would prohibit you from requiring more than the minimum. So again, as policy, the minimum is about a 1 to 1. If you think there's capacity on the site for additional, that's certainly within your purview. I would recommend that you might give a little bit of leeway to the landscape designer. You want to make sure that the trees aren't being crowded and that there's adequate room for the species that are identified to thrive. So if you can find a balanced way to accommodate that.
Yeah, I agree that, I think it would be difficult for us, just with the preliminary plan, to stipulate the exact number of trees required to.
I could suggest a minimum, you know, the minimum 1 to 1, and then a recommendation that the landscape designer consider whether additional could be accommodated as well. And if they can, that they be planted. So I don't know, giving a little more consideration for the actual site design and limitations that they might be facing. But making your intent very clear that, you know, more than the minimum be planted if possible.
Did you have any thoughts on screening requirements specifically between the properties?
No, reading the arborist report, it talked about woody vegetation removal, but it was also mentioned to preserve a certain amount. And so I don't see issues there at all.
You don't see issues with requiring any amendments to the landscaping preliminary plan, is what you meant?
No, that's what I mean, I don't. So long as the trees are sufficient, I think the vegetation there, with their trying to preserve as much as possible, won't be a, won't be a problem, I wouldn't change it.
Did you have an opinion on that?
Well, I guess a lot of this is, I mean, we're just going to have to let it proceed and see if they follow all the recommendations, so.
We have recommendations and requirements.
Right.
And I mean, I personally would like to see more screening between the property lines required because the existing invasive trees that are right there are forming a nice screen. And that, as I mentioned earlier, a recommendation for something deciduous that would provide light from the south in the winter and shade might be something good to put in, but.
Could you be specific where you're talking about? Because I'm not sure if I.
Lower left.
So you're talking about the end of the driveways?
Yeah, at the end of the parking spaces on the driveway, that area. A little bit below that is where the existing trees are.
Right.
There's the three-starred trees on that. And, but I think, you know, if you maybe even had some going up towards the driveway.
But if, can we go back to the last attachment? There are two there, so perhaps that should be three. And at the end of the driveways, what I'm making out on this proposed plan, it looks like shrubbery at the end of the off-street parking pad.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect that to be very high.
But so would you want deciduous trees there? Because then in the winter, there is no privacy screening. You would want a tree that is.
The deciduous, you would want more close to the house.
Yes.
Because you don't need the solar gain on the driveway.
Right.
And in fact, I think most of the area we're talking about right now is probably far enough away from the house that you might prefer to keep those evergreens as the current.
Yes, I think so. But I think the deciduous trees are an excellent recommendation because near the house, that's a very shady area and damp. And in the wintertime, deciduous trees are probably real welcome just to bring in a little drying out. I'd like to discuss what we're going to recommend on this driveway and the guardrail situation because I do think that that is really serious. And I'm very unclear on where the existing access is right now.
Yeah, I agree, that's a great topic for the next thing that we discuss. Before we move on, I'd just like to spend a couple more minutes to get the wording of the requirement for the landscaping. And I think we've already talked about the SFPUC and the staff have sufficient direction there. We're making a recommendation that you do as much as possible, bringing the anecdotal evidence. So I don't think we need to say anymore about that. But mostly on the southeast, you know, at a minimum, I would like to see wording that the applicant should work with staff to reestablish equivalent screening to what's there today. And I mean, I'd also like to see more trees than are there today going up that property line also, if that could be fit in.
Going up the southern property line?
Southern line, exactly.
And excuse me, but we also talked about the size of the box. And do we want to specify X number of trees be more mature, larger box, and in what areas?
I'd rather you defer that to, certain species will be better with certain-sized boxes, they'll grow faster. So I don't think you want to prescribe, until you know what plants and which tree species you're going to put in. You know, I think there's a level of prescription, I think we want to leave to the landscape designer and staff to work that through. We clearly get the intent that you're trying to maximize size going in, but you don't want to retard growth by putting in a tree. Certain trees will grow faster if they're a certain size, so we'd like to have that flexibility to work with the designer.
Usually, we don't stipulate the size of the box, although I don't know that I really see that a smaller tree would grow faster than a larger, a smaller box would grow larger than a faster box. All right, well, thoughts on size requirements?
Size requirements of the trees?
Of the box.
Of the box.
Of the box.
For the replacement trees.
Again, I think I would defer to what Mr. Swayaki had recommended, that we give them some flexibility with a strong recommendation that since there are very large mature trees being removed, we would like to see a preponderance of larger box trees planted as appropriate.
And the other issue I have is that, you know, the removal of these trees is going to be very expensive, you know, hundreds of, not thousands of dollars. And while a 48-inch box is a lot more expensive than 15-gallon, or is it 48-gallon? Sorry. I feel, and I may be wrong here, but I feel like the replacement expense is probably lower than the removal expense by a fairly large margin. So I think that, you know, we're picking at straws, cheaping out there. I mean, perhaps we should stipulate at least in the areas that are most sensitive, which in this case are the screening between the two properties, that the larger boxes be used in that location.
And did you say you wanted three trees there?
Well, personally, I would like to see four or five because there's already three there. And I'd be adding additional ones. But perhaps require three, work with staff to consider room for additional?
Yeah, as long as the tree's chosen, won't retard growth, you know, I think the more, the better because, you know, we're removing trees that are quite large right now, so.
All right, is that sufficient on trees? Does staff have sufficient direction on trees? All right, would you like to move on, Commissioner Mackin, to the driveway discussion?
Yes, the driveway. So do we have anything on plans that indicates where the current access driveway or dirt path, whatever it is, where it is located?
Yeah, I'll pull up the full topo survey. Sure, and I'll put it on the screen so the public can see. Oh, no, I meant, it's okay for you to give that to them.
But I was just there this morning, and there's another one up, up the hill too, coming down, isn't there? Where does your property end? Here, here? Well, there is, there is an existing driveway at grade of San Bruno. I just don't know if it's on this side of the line or that side of the line.
It is right here, right here.
Well, I'm familiar with this one below the property line, but there's another one above, but it might be. I see, so this driveway crosses someone else's property. This is it? Yeah, I'd have to walk it again. That would be good, yeah. And I've got Google Street View here. Here's the lower one he's talking about. Can't quite see it yet. Maybe here?
So this is the existing driveway, existing driveway right here, it's belonged to someone else's property. And we don't have a easement on it, it's just a history.
Okay.
And since I'm here, I just want to bring up a really quick question about the tree removal. And then, most of the tree removal are required by the city or by the SFPUC. I don't think the owner, it's not fair for the new owner to have to pay extra cost to plant like extra forty-eight bucks or, I mean, I just want to bring that up, you know.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your comment? I missed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, all the, most of the trees are removed either by SFPUC or by the city requirement. So I think it's not that fair to have the new owner to pay extra money for the planting all these trees or requirement like large box and things like that.
Thank you for your comment.
I just want to say also that is the upper driveway, you guys are gonna have to go up. And it starts on their property and it goes down, and it goes into the other property. But they can turn and stay on their property, and it has no guardrail. It's just on the upper.
Upper.
It's on the uphill side part of the property.
This, let me see, am I, am I quoting it or what?
Staff, could staff point out where on the map?
This is not a property right here, this someone's property too, right on this area. So if you drive, you have to drive to someone's property.
No, that property is your property all the way up to San Bruno Avenue.
Mr. Redder, I appreciate your experience, but we're not having a discussion right now.
Okay, but he brought up about the lower driveway, so I'm going to bring up about the upper driveway.
I understand, but you're out of order.
Okay.
Could staff please indicate on the map where the fence ends? Above, there's the wooden bridge, and then there's a fence, and then the fence ends. Where is that relative to the property line?
Well, so first of all, the property line is here.
That's the south property line, right? Where's the north property line?
North is, well, it's off-screen, but it's over here.
And where is the end of the fence?
Um, the.
The fence to the north of the, of the bridge, the pedestrian bridge.
Well, here is the pedestrian bridge.
Right.
Here is a bit of concrete wood rail.
Is that that little right angle turn there? Is that the end of the?
This.
Maybe, maybe this is the end of it.
That looks like a retaining wall to me.
A retaining wall, okay.
So the only driveway apron that's shown on the survey is here. Which is thirty-eight fifty-two Bay Shore.
Yeah, I mean, I remember seeing a driveway when I walked up there, but I just don't remember where it is.
Right, well, per the survey, it's here, which is not on the subject property. The survey puts the front property line parallel to San Bruno Ave. As parallel to this pedestrian bridge with a pretty steep slope here. There is, there is a vacant property here that's owned, you can see this here, so maybe it's on their property?
Yeah.
But the actual property line, so here's again, San Bruno Avenue. The property line juts out this way to the north, and that's a budding of vacant parcel.
Right.
Which may have a driveway. Right, but I guess the point being, it passes over another person's property.
Through the chair, if we could.
Yeah. Yeah, the meeting is dragging on a little bit, and if we were to investigate the upper driveway, I mean, that would pretty much involve denying their plan and starting over it.
I don't think that you, this isn't a design permit, so in, I defer to the director, but I don't think investigating alternative driveway locations would necessarily mean you would have to deny what the applicant's proposing in terms of the use of the site. It would probably need to go again, if there was any revision to the driveway, just as a general note, we would have to circulate the plans back to the plan operator for the HCP and SFPUC.
So we could come back and hear this again?
I don't think that a driveway change would be a substantial.
I think it depends if it drives some change to the project design, I guess would be the question. If it was strictly just a flatwork and a relocated driveway, I don't believe the commission would need to review it again if it substantially modifies the overall project design, though, that would be another story.
Well, it's just difficult sitting here, I mean, I don't think I can, based on anecdotal evidence, prohibit the use of the lower driveway. And a recommendation to use the highest, higher driveway wouldn't necessarily be meaningful, although certainly we could do that. Do you want to continue with what you were in the process of?
I guess I would, I would just make a recommendation that perhaps the city engineer just take a second look at whether there's an access at a safer point further northward off of San Bruno. It's, it seems like it would run parallel to these pipes, and it would come down to the same driveway on the plans. It would just be an entry point, maybe at a safer location on San Bruno. And that would be a simple matter of yes, there's one, or no, there isn't.
That sounds reasonable. Do you have any other driveway comments?
I have none.
Commissioner CSN?
No. May I ask one question?
Yes.
Chair? In the staff report, it references Cal Green requirements for solar, but I saw nothing on the plans. Is there anything for solar on this project?
That's typically not something they would show at this level.
Okay.
For planning level review, so they have the option, it is a flat roof, so they could do a cool roof.
Okay.
But that would be something they would choose and have plans for a building permit.
Is it normally required that it be solar ready for a subsequent owner if they don't install it?
That, I believe that's just a stipulation of Cal Green.
Well, there's two things, one, the city ordinance requires them to install solar, so it's not really an option, or a cool, cool roof, but, and then they do have to be, if they want a cool roof, they still have to pre-plumb for solar by Cal Green.
Thank you.
Did we have any other items of discussion besides the SFPUC negotiation, the driveway considerations, and the landscaping requirements?
Oh, and then you, did we put a recommendation for another speed study? So is that in?
Oh, that advisory condition for a speed study, I don't know that that's related to the approval of this project, though.
Yeah, I think it's something that we can absolutely, definitely bring up at a staff level. But yeah, I'm not sure there's a nexus necessarily. I mean, yes, it's all related when we're talking about driveway locations, but if it's a general speed study, I think that's something that's more appropriate for us to bring up, to the engineer directly.
The same for the drainage considerations for the water coming off of San Bruno. It'd be good for you to.
Right.
Bring that up with Public Works, although I don't think it.
That's something you could have an advisory recommendation in the REZO for, cause that's related to the drainage design on the site.
I see, and so what would we recommend then that Public Works fix the drainage before the?
Well, that any, I would say any improvements within the public right-of-way associated with this project, take into consideration existing drainage patterns and issues. Cause you know, they will be, I'm assuming, it's not shown on the plans here, but typically this engineer requires street widening, as you know. That means there'll be new facilities and activities in the street. That's the time probably to capture any facilities in the right-of-way that aren't performing well now. So I would, I would recommend, if you guys are interested in doing an advisory recommendation, that any street improvements required by the city engineer, take into consideration existing drainage.
Are the street widening requirements undecided at this point? Because I didn't think that was being done.
So it's not something the city engineer required them to show in these plans, which he's, has been a pattern as of late, doesn't mean they are not subject to his requirements at building permit, but at planning level review, it's not something he required prior to you guys looking at it. So when they consider the drainage issue, they'll also factor in if all these large trees are removed? That's something the engineer designing, the drainage is gonna have to consider is the entirety of the project.
Okay.
Including grading, including site disturbance.
And I would also hope that in addition to all of that, that Public Works could take another look to see if anything could be done if the drainage that's existing isn't actually operating. And there's others I've seen in town that seem to be perpetually not operating as well.
Yeah, adjacent to the property line, and I think again, tied to whatever improvements that move forward.
Okay.
I had one more, if I may. Again, I would recommend active onsite measures to control traffic and ensure safety on that blind curve when there's a lot of heavy equipment is.
Again, that's something the city engineer controls, a traffic control plan for construction, and he will determine if there are gonna be road disturbances or additional safety precautions that need to be made due to site conditions.
That's good, thank you.
Is the corner here curved such that a mirror would be of any use? No one's backing into this driveway, so I can't quite imagine whether there's anything additional you'd be able to see. It seems to me that it's sort of at the outside curve, so I can't quite imagine a place where that would help.
Perhaps in the right-of-way across the street.
Right-of-way across.
If you want to make that recommendation.
Maybe just a recommendation that it be investigated.
You can certainly, you know, again, the city engineer will ascertain what's required to make a safe intersection and a safe new driveway location. You can certainly add advisory, but again, it's.
That's perhaps sufficient.
Nope.
Do we have any need to reopen the public hearing? Do you want to reopen the public hearing? Or do you think this has gone on long enough?
I'm ready to make a motion for approval.
All right. Would you like to make the motion then?
I'd love to. Like to make a motion for approval of the project at ten ninety-three San Bruno Avenue, application number zero zero seven five five three one six zero, containing the recommendations made by the planning commission tonight.
I will second the motion.
Yes, and for clarification, that's the SFPUC negotiations, the driveway considerations, landscaping requirements, and drainage considerations. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, I'll read the appeal process right now, since, okay. Usually, we do this at the end of the meetings, but since a lot of people are perhaps about to leave. The appeals process, anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council. An appeal to a planning commission action or use permit shall be filed with the city clerk no less than six calendar days following the action. An application form and fee is required to file a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at four one five five zero eight two one one zero. All right. We're now going to move on to public hearing number two, two eighty Old Country, Old County Road, seventy-one dash one four five Park Lane and twenty-five dash forty-three Park Place in the TC one district, zoning text and map amendment, RZ three dash seventeen, pursuant to the parkside overlay districts. We have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So I'm going to keep our report pretty brief, primarily because you guys saw the parkside plan very recently. It also was at council for a couple of meetings as well prior to being adopted. So basically, the zoning text and map amendments before you tonight are intended to formalize and amend the zoning ordinance to reflect all of the standards for the housing overlay districts that were described and adopted through the parkside plan itself. So just a reminder, the parkside plan was, it's a precise plan. It established and was reviewed by you and ultimately adopted by the city council. However, to perfect the standards it contained, we have to actually also amend the zoning ordinance. We amended the general plan along with the parkside plan adoption. So these are implementing and required to be consistent with the general plan amendments. So just a quick overview, the proposed amendments would impact primarily, they would involve adding a new chapter to the zoning ordinance. And this chapter would contain a bifurcated sub-district kind of style for PAOZ one, which is the smaller lot slash townhome style housing development, which would apply on twenty-five Park Place, forty-one to forty-three Park Place, and two eighty Old County Road. And then PAOZ two, which would accommodate more traditional multifamily development, to the three sites on Park Lane ranging from ninety-one to one forty-five. The structure we went with is very similar to the existing neighborhood commercial district, which as you'll note, has, also has a sub-district, NCRO one, which is Brisbane Village, and NCRO two, which is along visitation. So we went the same route in terms of structure for the PAOZ one and two districts. The actual development standards themselves contained in the amendments again mirror what was adopted in the parkside plan, so, and that is as it was adopted by the council. You'll probably note and already noticed that the council adopted the plan with all the commission's recommended changes, except for the provision to allow an additional story in the rear of properties. So minus that recommendation, it was adopted per your recommended amendments. The map amendment further would change our zoning map to reflect the new overlay districts, and because they're overlay districts, we've, existing over the TC one underlying district, we've indicated them basically in a hatched format. I think visually, that kind of captures their purpose and role pretty accurately from a visual standpoint. So I'll keep it brief, I'll leave it there. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
My question was how the parking layout or parking requirements were impacted by that decision to not have the fourth story.
Sure, so as was discussed at council, basically, the design and the conceptual land use framework, so the conceptual plan that was drawn up by the consultants, as well as their parking standards for the driveways, those. those were all predicated on assuming there would be no podium parking, that it would all be surface parking. So there was, I think the intent, if I understood it correctly from the commission, was, hey, let's free up even more surface area, but there was never a conflict of actually meeting the required parking with a three-story format.
Okay, great. Do you have more to present, or should we go on to your questions? Do you have questions?
One, just one. Under resolution, and I'm in section, I'll just give you the page numbers, probably easier. G two point one nine, letter I, open area requirements. At least hundred square feet of open area shall be provided. Moving down, it says, open areas shall be usable, shall support residents' passive and/or active use. Computation of open areas may include amenities and structures designed to enhance usability, blah, 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 blah. It talks about pools, planters, fountains, benches. Would it be prudent perhaps to add language that you cannot include parking lots as an amenity in the computation of open area? Because I loosely could read this and say, swimming pools are amenity, parking lots an amenity.
Is that already defined negatively in the general plan?
Could that in fact be misconstrued? And, and if not, I'm okay, but.
Well, parking is a discreet required use for this property. I wouldn't consider parking, which is a vehicular, it's not made for the enjoyment of residence. It's for vehicular parking. I don't, if you want to put it in there, but that would be nothing that else is in the code. We have that sort of requirement carries in other sections too, so.
Okay, then I'm all right with it, thank you.
And just, yeah, to expand on that, you know, for example, for condo developments, we have a requirement for an average of four hundred square feet of usable outdoor space. And we have never interpreted that nor, you know, it's never been applied to potentially include parking. It's, it's for people, spaces for people, not for cars.
Commissioner CSN, did you have any?
No questions?
And I have one more about the council recommendations. Did they require the electric car charging to be close to the entrances, or did they?
No, they, they kept your recommendation of the commission, which was that they not be located close to entrances.
Great, thanks, because I know there was some discussion about no one would make a case.
They needed clarification on that.
Other electric cars that didn't need to charge might choose just to, yeah, excellent. Okay, I wasn't able to go to that meeting, so thank you for bringing me up to speed. Given no other questions, I think we're ready to recommend.
Sorry, just through the chair, it is a public hearing.
Oh, right, there's nobody in the room, but I forget that we just make a motion to close, since we don't have to open, right? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. And so we've already, oh, but we are approving the, the red lines and the new text, so we are going to make a motion now to adopt, right?
Right, to, to make the recommendation to council.
Okay, so we are recommending that council adopt the changes to the zoning text. Could someone please make that motion?
Make a motion that we approve and make the recommendation for the zoning text and map amendment, RZ three dash one seven. Those are under applications number zero zero five two one two dash one hundred, zero zero five two oh two one sixty, zero zero five one nine oh one hundred, zero zero five two oh two two hundred, zero zero five two oh two one fifty, and zero zero five two oh two two ten.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Items initiated by staff.
Let's see, we, the council considered the M, the Northwest Bay Shore M one rezoning, and they continued that matter to allow for some additional text consideration or minor changes and research, so I think that's going back to the council in January. Just a reminder to, only for Commissioner Anderson, who's here tonight, that the, the, the applications for commission for the next term, anybody who's expired, they should reach out to the city clerk if they're interested in reapplying and that information.
What is the time period that you're seeking?
January twelfth, yeah.
January twelfth is the deadline to submit.
Now through then, and then also the other applicants for the other open seats are also during the same time period?
They'll, they'll appoint for all the open seats, yes, or the reappoint. And I think that's really all I had.
Um, we sent you guys a invitation, sorry, it was belated, for the annual City Hall Christmas lunch that we have. It's December thirteenth, which is a Wednesday at Mission Blue. It is in the afternoon, so we understand work sometimes conflicts with that, but you guys are more than welcome and encouraged to attend. Other items, I think that's, that's probably it for now.
All right. Items initiated by the commission. Commissioner Minier is not present tonight, and also there's a recommendation to, again, defer the zoning text and map conformity with the Brisbane general plan for the Baylands area to allow for the city attorney to review. Does anyone else have any additional items from the commission to bring up tonight?
Nope.
And neither do I. Could I then have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting of December twelfth, twenty seventeen, at seven thirty PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.